Being 7:00 PM on the eighth day of May 2023 in the town of Grafton, I call the annual town meeting to order. Welcome to Spring Town Meeting. My name is Dawn Anderson. I am the town moderator and I respectfully ask that I be addressed as Madam Moderator. Can the people in the Commons area hear? Sorry, I'm going to do a sound check. I got halfway through my remarks in the fall and found out nobody heard anything in the Common area. Testing. Chief, can you hear me? Okay. My first order of business is to appoint Dave Robbins as deputy moderator. Thank you, Dave. There are no food or drink allowed in the auditorium during the meeting. I would like for as many of the visitors to stay on this section. I know we have a lot of people still waiting to come in, so if anyone who's wearing a visitor badge just stay to this side, to my left. Visitors associated with boards or committees may sit with those boards or committees if they have cleared it with me prior to the meeting. Shouting or outbursts will not be tolerated at any time. The town of Grafton is pleased to announce that for the viewing audience at home, we are now offering closed captioning. Tonight's town meeting closed captioning is provided by the Cable Oversight Committee. If you would like to speak on an article, please come forward to the microphones at the front of the auditorium and clearly and loudly state your name and address. If you are unable to navigate to the microphones, we have a wireless microphone available. We have three members of Grafton High School's National Honor Society here tonight and they will be able to bring a microphone. Just raise your hand and one will be brought to you. Please, no, I did not. Okay. Unfortunately, the electronic voting system is not functioning properly, so we have the paddles back from the football field, red for no, green for yes. And I've just been informed that we have run out of paddles, which means that we'll be raising hands. It's going to be fun. It's going to be so much fun. Okay. Before I officially open the meeting, I'd like to take a moment to remember Jim Gallagher. Over his many years in Grafton, Jim found his way to several committees, including the Veterans Advisory Committee, the Cable Oversight Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, the Grafton Housing Authority, and the Grafton Little League. And he was also a very vocal and active participant in town meeting. Last spring, when I contacted the CPC to see who would be speaking on their behalf at the various articles they had submitted, Jim responded to me, "Dawn, if I am to speak, please provide a fife and drum overture, followed by me being carried to the microphone in a mahogany chair." This is for Jim. Thank you. I now ask the Chair of the Select Board, Madam Colleen Roy, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recently, the Select Board voted to approve a land acknowledgement. I invite Andy Jefferson to come forward to give background on that and read the land acknowledgement into the record.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Good evening, everyone. Several months ago, at the suggestion of Grafton Rise, the Select Board began discussions around adopting a land acknowledgement. Simply stated, land acknowledgements are formal statements that recognize indigenous people as the traditional stewards of the land we currently occupy. The Select Board reached out to both the Nipmunk Nation Tribal Council and locally to the Hassanamesco Nipmunk Band to see if this is something they may be interested in and how best to start that process. What we heard resoundingly was that while this statement should be acknowledged, what happened throughout history, the true importance was the dedication to the land. The Board also recognized that the land acknowledgement needed to be more than just words, but one step and a series of commitments to respect our indigenous population. I am not native. My ancestors were colonizers. The members of this Board learned through listening and reading rather than through our own personal experiences. As we start talking today, I want to be sure to think about the people on whose land we are standing, the Hassanamesco Nipmunk people who are still here today. This learning journey has helped me personally better understand the harm caused by colonization. It's time to be better allies to our indigenous population, to listen to their experiences, to include their voices, because they are the authorities on their own history. The Grafton Select Board acknowledges that the land the town of Grafton is located on is the traditional and unceded territory of the Hassanamesco Nipmunk people who continue to reside on the land today. This acknowledgement is to be read at the annual town meeting to remember that in 1654, the colonial legislature established the third praying Indian village of Hassanamese, which is known today as Grafton. We denounce the violence of colonialism, which stripped these original stewards of their lands that were their ancestral home. We seek to better educate ourselves and honor these lands. We recognize and honor the Nipmunk, who were displaced, and celebrate those who returned and remain today. Let this acknowledgement serve as a reminder for all people when they are enjoying the land, wildlife, and natural beauty of Grafton, of our commitment to being good stewards of the land and supporting the rights and interests of indigenous people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson. Now for some introductions. Our town administrator, Evan Burssad. Assistant Town Administrator William Blake, running the PowerPoint. Our town attorney, Ginny Kramer, behind me. Town meeting times says that the town council needs to be within arms' reach of the moderator at all times, which I find hilarious. Our town clerk, Candy LaValley. And you may have noticed an abundance of visitors here tonight that are a bit younger than voting age. I invited the Grafton Middle School Social Studies students to attend our town meeting so they could see our legislative body in action before they travel to Washington, D.C. at the end of the month. I am very thrilled to see how many took me up on my offer, and I think that it was the quiz grade they're getting for free, but still, they're here and maybe will inspire someone. And now we have some updates from Capital City. Mr. Meridian?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening. I assure you, no one came to hear from a politician, so I'll be very brief. I am joined by District Director Dorian Goodrich from Senator Moore's office. Unfortunately, the senator couldn't be here. He's in Boston getting ready for the release of the Senate budget coming up tomorrow, but obviously extends his very best wishes. Very quickly, we did our House budget at the end of April. I won't bore you with too many of the details, except that we did increase many items from the governor's original budget. She had $30 per pupil. We were fortunate enough to get to $60 per pupil. We were also able to secure $25,000 in public safety improvements for Grafton, $25,000 for the community harvest barn, and $6 million for the Cummings School. It's a wonderful opportunity to support the Cummings School in all those endeavors, but specifically for the Cummings School, it's a public-private partnership, and that's wonderful. But we also were contacted tonight for someone who has given a wealth of their time of service to the town of Grafton, and we wanted to come and pay respect to Sue Robbins. So Sue, could you come up, please? So this is Sue's last town meeting, and because of that, well, yes, you most certainly will be up there. Last one, being a glutton for punishment up here. But that being said, Dorian and I wanted to come and present to you a citation from the General Court, and it reads, "Be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts General Court offers its sincerest congratulations to Sue Robbins in recognition of your 33 years of dedicated service to the town of Grafton, including your 25 years of service as a member of the Finance Committee. It's given the eighth of May 2023. It's signed by all of your delegation, including Senator Moore and Representative Meridian." I'm going to turn it over to Dorian quite quickly, but Sue, congratulations.
Thank you, Representative Meridian. Again, the senator sends his regrets he couldn't be here, and unlike Representative Meridian, who could announce all those numbers, the Senate budget won't be released until tomorrow, so my lips are sealed, but there will be good news coming out. But I'm here to represent Senator Moore to honor Sue, and he asked me to specifically talk about her 25 years on the Finance Committee. You know, when voters, as you know, go to the polls to vote on an override, a school, whatever, they look to their Finance Committee for their integrity and their honesty of what the impact will be on the community. When they go to vote on their municipal budget tonight, they look to the Finance Committee for real numbers, real truth, and real leadership. So thank you for your leadership over these many years.
Thank you for allowing me to serve. It's been my privilege.
Now I'd like to ask our town clerk, Candy LaValley, to read the return of the warrant. I'm going to Vanowite my way across to bring her the microphone, because we don't have enough.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Grafton Annual Town Meeting, May 8th, 2023 Warrant. To any of the constables of the town of Grafton in the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Grafton qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet in the Grafton High School Auditorium located at 24 Providence Road on Monday, the eighth day of May 2023 at 7:00 PM and act on the following articles. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up an attested copy thereof in some conspicuous place in each of the precincts of the town at least 14 days before said meeting. Hereof fail not and make do return of this warrant with the doings thereof to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as aforesaid. Given under our hands this 18th day of April in the year of our Lord 2023, Select Board Town of Grafton, Colleen Roy, Chair; Matthew Ofton, Vice Chair; Andrew Jefferson, Clerk; Anne Marie Foley, Raymond Meade. I have complied with the requirements of the above warrant and with the Town of Grafton bylaws by posting an attested copy of the warrant in some conspicuous place in each of the precincts of the town on the above date. Mary Ann DeFreeze, Constable of Grafton.
Thank you, Candy. We have two consent agendas on the warrant tonight. To review, consent agenda's purpose is to act expeditiously on certain types of articles that generate little to no debate and can be addressed with a single vote. Consent Agenda 1 pertains to articles that will affect the current fiscal year. Having these articles in the annual town meeting eliminates the need for a special town meeting. Consent Agenda 2 pertains to articles that will affect the next fiscal year. These have been added as a consent agenda to ensure that time is available for discussion of genuine debate. Once the consent agenda motion is made, I will read each article under the consent as one at a time. If you wish to place a hold on any of the individual articles, please just call out "hold," and I will have that article set aside, and we will vote on the remaining articles. From there, each article that was held will be addressed in the order that it appears on the warrant. Wow, there's a lot of people here tonight. Consent Agenda 1. Ms. Roy?
Madam Moderator. I move the town vote to act upon Article 1, 2, and 3, and that they be passed by Consent Agenda.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? On Consent Motion 1? I did not hear any "holds." Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, the students cannot vote. And I know where you are, because you're way smaller than everybody else. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Consent Agenda 2.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to act upon Article 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12, and that they may be passed by consent.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. I did not hear for any "holds." Before I open discussion on Consent Agenda 2, I invite the Chair of the Finance Committee to read the State of the Town message.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This evening, the Finance Committee is pleased to report on the State of the Town as we near the end of fiscal year 2023. The town administrator and superintendent continue to work diligently this year to provide necessary services while preserving much of our dwindling override capacity as possible. The town's combined free cash and stabilization reserves are within 5% to 10% threshold prescribed in our financial policies and are adequate to support a stable AA+ bond rating. The town continues to improve the budgeting process using the ClearGov Financial Transparency Platform that was implemented last year, resulting in the details of the current, next, and past several years budgeted and actual expenditures being available online to the general public. Links can be found on the Town of Grafton homepage. This platform also includes project sections where pending, ongoing, and past capital projects are being shown with data on the progress of the project, including photos of the project as they happen. As projected last year, in concert with the change of the town's accounting software package, this year's budget includes budget category reorganizations aimed at providing greater transparency to the taxpayers and aligning more closely with the standard accounting practices. The majority of the $5.5 million from the American Rescue Plan Act has been allocated. The new HVAC system at the Grafton Middle School is still in progress due to limited availability of equipment. The money allocated for additional nursing staff for the schools for the school year 2022-23 was not needed, and it has been proposed to the committee that the remaining money be used instead for ADA improvements. The overhaul of the municipal website was completed in the fall. A new minivan was purchased for use by our senior center. In FY '21, the town voted to allocate funds for the Community Preservation Committee to a rental assistance program for residents facing economic hardship during the pandemic. That money was used last fiscal year. A vote for another round of CPC funding will be happening this evening. The Affordable Housing Trust is reviewing proposals for the 25 Worcester Street parcel that was gifted by the town to the trust at the 2020 Spring Town Meeting. There are still several development projects in the works. The developer of the mixed-use development at 8 Pine Street and the former DPW site at 17 and 27 Upton Street is still working with the town and the Affordable Housing Trust to advance those projects. The Select Board has entered into a few local initiative program agreements in the past year for developments at 59 Pleasant Street, 116 Upton Street, and Snow Road. Despite all the proposed and potential future construction, a school department-sponsored study in 2019 that is being updated now shows that our current school buildings have more than sufficient capacity for the projected needs. Enrollment is on a downturn due to birth rates that have been declining since the peak in the early 2000s. A second cannabis retail shop opened in FY '23, with the remaining one still moving towards opening after an ownership change and construction delays due to COVID. Due to recent legislative changes, it is unclear whether we will receive the payments that were part of our original host agreements. As such, this budget only includes a minimal amount of revenue from the shops in keeping with the financial best practices and our own fiscal policies. The FY '24 budget represents a 4.9 million or 6.9% increase compared to FY '23. Consistent with the 2020 override plan, the school department budget increased by $1.57 million or 3.75%. The school department is adding its first counselor to be shared between the two lower elementary schools. The number of classroom teachers needed next year has decreased, and through retirements, the overall staffing level has not increased with this added counselor. The cost of health insurance increased again this year at a rate of 5%. Our cost of the Blackstone Valley Tech increased by $263,000 due to a 10% increase in the enrollment in fiscal years 2022-23 compared to 2021-22, and it was a 10% increase in per student costs for the Grafton from $14,138 to $15,556. Thus far, we are projecting the minimum $60 per student increase in our Chapter 70 state aid for schools, but we are working with our legislators to try to get this year's funding increase into coverage changes to the state aid formula so that towns such as Grafton get a fair share of the state aid and aren't regularly limited to the bare minimum aid increases. We are still on target for the Proposition 2.5 override from 2020 to last us through fiscal year 2025 as originally projected. The remaining excess levy capacity at this time is $130,000. The revenue estimates for this year are conservative, as they usually are, so this remaining amount should increase, significant continuing long-term issues including a shortfall in OPEP funding. The remaining balance in the capital stabilization fund will be $138,273. Certified free cash is $1,777,324. If all articles funded by free cash are approved this evening, Article 3 is asking for $150,000, and Article 14 is asking for $233,218. The remaining free cash balance will be $1,394,106. Grafton continues to have a significant capital needs to fund. In FY '23, the average assessed value of a single-family home was $507,939, up from $488,565 in the previous year, and the tax rate is $1571 per thousand, which is down $1.19 per thousand from FY '22, and the average single-family tax bill is $7,980. In conclusion, the risks and challenges to Grafton's fiscal health continue, and we continue to search for ways to meet our increased costs while state aid, as a percentage of our budget, continues to decline. The Finance Committee would like to welcome Amber Defendifer, who joined the town administrative office this year as an administrative assistant covering the Select Board Finance Committee and the Affordable Housing Trust. This follows the retirement of our longtime administrative assistant, Sue Fiacco. We want to thank Sue for her years of service and for ensuring a smooth transition. We would also like to thank town administrator Evan Burssad, assistant town administrator William Blake, administrative assistant Amber Defendifer, town finance director Mary Lauria, the Select Board Superintendent Schools Jake Cummings, School Department Director of Finance Anita Patel, the School Committee, all department heads, and of course, all members of the Finance Committee for their hard work as part of the budget process this year. Now, Representative Meridian took some of our thunder away, so thank you, Representative, but we would like to also thank Sue Robbins. So Sue, can you please come up? We're going to make you keep getting up and down. The Finance Committee thanks you for your dedicated, hard work and service for 25 years. You were mentor to all of us, and you are going to be missed, but we expect you to be sitting in that audience, keeping an eye on us. I'm sure you will be. But I ask Angelina to come up. Just a little token of our appreciation, we just wanted to give you a little gift and wish you the best in your retirement.
Finally, gold bars.
Thank you. Next, I invite Doug Bowman to provide an update on the Grafton Public Library Building Committee.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. My name is Doug Bowman, on behalf of the Grafton Public Library Building Committee. Just plan on giving you a quick update on the current status of the project, and thankfully, this will be our last update, as you'll see. So just going back to 2017, just wanted to remind you that at the town meeting in May, the town approved that current budget for that project. As you can see, it was approximately $16.6 million. This, as well, we had a grant from the Massachusetts Public Library Construction Program that was going to pay about 45% to 50% of the building costs, so that was estimated about $7.4 million. So the total cost to the town is going to be about $9.1 million. And around the same time, a Grafton capital campaign was formed, and the goal of that project was to raise money to support the project and other out-of-scope projects, and the target funding for that was about $800,000. So just a quick timeline for the project. If you fast-forward two years, we get to May 2019. That's when we broke ground. I think with any large construction process or project, you expect some challenges. I don't think anyone would have predicted some of the challenges we had. First, of course, was some issues we had with the soil. There was some contamination that we had to deal with. It required some significant remediation and time as well. That was back in, you know, around December of 2019, and then shortly thereafter, we all know what hit next was COVID, so the construction team had to deal with all those challenges around COVID. But as you can see, the project progressed pretty quickly. October 2020, right in the middle, you can see that's when the remediation was completed. The foundations were all poured, and the iron structure started going up. So you really got to see what it started to look like. And then fast-forward to October of 2021, and we had open, so we were open for business. Just a, you can, next slide, please. So what did this project look like at the end? One of the big design goals of the project was to minimize the impact of that view from the Common. So as you can see in this picture, just two different views, really doesn't look any different than the original project. If you peek over to the right, you can see part of the new construction, but it really blends in nicely. So that's definitely very exciting. You're on the Common, it looks the same. Next slide. The biggest change, of course, is if you're traveling north on 140, coming into the Common on Upton Street, and this is the new building, the new entrance, I should say. If you look in the front, that design of that was what we call bookends. It was supposed to mirror what the front of the building looks like, and of course, everything in the middle is the main library. So definitely very exciting on the outside. I think if you look inside, it's much more exciting. Next slide. So one of the reasons we had the renovation and construction project was the limitations of the old library. We really didn't have enough space for many groups within the town. For example, the teen room. We didn't have any teen space in the original library, so if you look at the bottom, there's a couple snapshots of the new teen space, and it's great to see a lot of people there. Some, the children's room, an activity room, lots of natural light. If you look in the top right, you can see the skylight that allows a lot of that natural light to come into the library. Community room, this is a large community room, holds about, I think about 120 people, so we've already had over the past year a lot of, you know, really large events there. So now the catch point, or the big thing to recognize is the update of the project to date. So as I mentioned, the total budget was $16.6 million as of, I think it was April 22nd. And we currently have a surplus of $77,000, so a lot of hard work, but the project came out pretty much on budget. As far as estate reimbursement, you know, that was projected at around $7.4 million. We've actually received a large percentage of that already, so we've received a little over $6.2 million, and we're expecting the last $1.1 million next year. And we're going for LEED certification. We're going for LEED certification. LEED, I always forget this, Energy and Environmental Design. This is for how environmentally friendly the building is, so we've certified, or we're applied for Silver Certification. It's pending approval, but we really expect to get that, and that's going to end up with an extra a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that should come in sometime next year. I mentioned the capital campaign. Through a lot of hard work by the campaign itself and the generosity of many of the residents of Grafton and businesses of Grafton, the campaign was able to raise almost a million dollars, pretty phenomenal. And this money has contributed to the project in a few different ways, including funding for just the project itself, but also to fund some out-of-scope projects, so things that were not in the original building program or the original budget. And I've included a list, might be hard to see for some of you, but a lot of the outside space, stone walls, brick walkways, landscaping patios, some beautiful green roofs that you can see from inside the building, and a lot of other things inside the building. So with that, I just wanted to thank the Building Committee, obviously, over the past, what, five, five and a half years or so, just an incredible amount of time, you know, by these volunteers. So a list of the current members and past members, and then, of course, some of the construction team, the clerk of the works, so I'd like to really thank that group. And then finally, if you have not taken advantage of the tremendous resources that are inside or outside the building, I welcome you and invite you to go to the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Next up, I have Dave Robinson here to provide an update on the Grafton Bylaw Study Committee.
Yeah, so this is something you're gonna see a lot more of in the fall. The Bylaw Study Committee wanted to give you all a brief update on where we're at. The mission of this Bylaw Study Committee was to review the town's general bylaws and propose revisions for the adoption at the October twenty-third, twenty-three town meeting. This committee was created last year in two thousand twenty-two. The town charter requires a bylaw review to be done every five years, and the last bylaw review committee had been completed in two thousand oh-three, like twenty years ago. So the Select Board realized that this needed to be done, created this committee consisting of five members. Andy Jefferson representing the Select Board, Greg Marr representing the Finance Committee, myself representing the Town Administrator, Skip Courier representing the Town Clerk, and Brian Langivan, our one-at-large member. So the committee organized itself in June of last year and has been meeting regularly, the second, fourth Thursday of every month, with maybe a couple of exceptions, since August. Been very busy. Next slide, please. And what the committee is doing is a thorough review of the general bylaws from top to bottom. We're looking at basically everything, from typos, spelling, grammar, paragraph numbering. We're looking at consistency or the lack thereof among bylaw articles, consistency and conflicts with the town charter. We want to make sure that whatever the charter says, the bylaws don't contradict it. We also are eliminating a couple things from the bylaws that the charter already says. There's no need to repeat them in the bylaws. We're looking at bylaw provisions that may be out of date, and we're revising them or even eliminating them if they're no longer necessary. Also looking at adding new bylaw provisions where it seems to be necessary. All five of us committee members are people who pay a lot of attention to detail, so that means that there's a lot of work that we're doing, and I congratulate or commend all the members of the committee for being equal participants in this, fortunately, because there's no way I could do all this myself. And the committee has, from the beginning, been soliciting suggestions, recommendations, comments from all the town officers and agencies who are responsible for administering the bylaw and from the public. We've always opened to receiving public comments. Next slide. There are a total of forty-one articles in our bylaws. Of these, to date, we have reviewed three of them and concluded that no revisions are necessary. We have completed our initial review of twenty-three of them where we have proposed revisions. We're still working on the last fifteen. You can read all of the proposed revisions by going to the town website. Under the Bylaw Study Committee, we have a page for bylaw article status updates, and so drafts of every one of the proposed revised bylaws are available there for public review. Probably goes without saying that all of these drafts are subject to further revision as we are still working on this. Next slide. And last slide. I want to repeat that the committee is very, very interested in hearing comments and suggestions from everybody. Our meetings are open to the public. We generally meet, as I said, second, fourth Thursdays of the month. Almost all of our meetings have been in person and on Zoom to hopefully make it easy to participate. We also have, on the committee's webpage, you have a link that you can click to submit comments electronically. We're planning a meeting probably in June to sort of invite the public in to discuss all of the revisions that we've proposed so far, with the understanding that these revisions, we hope they will be substantially, substantially complete but not yet final. We may hold another review meeting in early September with final proposed revisions, and of course, leading up to town meeting in October, the Finance Committee will be holding their review of all, however many warrant articles we end up producing for the bylaw revisions as well as everything else. Plenty more opportunity for public review and comment. Again, we invite you to, if you're at all interested, you know, please review and comment, and that's it for now. We'll see you in October.
And now we have the Chair of the Select Board, Colleen Roy.
So the Select Board just wanted to take a minute to thank Sue Robbins for her incredible dedication to the town of Grafton. So in recognition of her thirty-three years. There you go. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. I will now open discussion on the consent agenda. No articles were held. Are there any? It's not a good microphone. Hearing none. There was a hold on Article Nine? I thought I heard something, but it was so far away. So we're going to remove Article Nine and vote on Articles Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Ten, Eleven, Twelve. All those in favor, please raise your hand and your paddles if you have them. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Nine.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move the town vote to fix the maximum amounts that may be spent during the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, beginning on July one, two thousand twenty-three, for the revolving funds detailed in Article Nine in the amount set forth in the warrant in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Fifty-three E and a Half.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the article? I presumed that if someone held it, they wanted to talk about it.
I think they said twenty-nine, not nine. I think that's why everyone's been, right?
We can't take the articles out of order. This is...
No, but I think that's what they were saying. I think they were confused, too. I think that's what they were saying. Why would we...
Just move on. Just do the vote.
Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Nine? All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Thirteen.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money in the amount of seventy-three million one hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars as recommended by the Town Administrator and Finance Committee, and as detailed in Appendix A of the annual town meeting warrant for the purpose of funding the operation of several departments in the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We're going to have the Town Clerk read the compressed budget category by category, and if you wish to make a hold on one of those, please say "hold."
General Government, thirteen million four hundred seventeen thousand two hundred twenty-six. Public Safety, four million four hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred forty-nine. Public Works, four million four hundred sixty-three thousand four hundred forty-nine. Oh, I'm sorry, I just read that. Education, forty-three million four hundred twenty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-six. Public Works, three million five hundred ninety-five thousand eight hundred fifty-six. Health and Human Services, six hundred thirty-one thousand nine hundred sixty-three. Culture and Recreation, one million four hundred seventy-five thousand and five dollars. Debt Services, six million eighty-two thousand five hundred thirty-four. Interfund Transfers, fifty thousand. Total Expenditures, seventy-three million one hundred forty-three thousand eight hundred twenty, twenty, I'm sorry, eight hundred and twenty-nine.
Thank you, Candy. Is there any discussion on the article? Yes, sir.
Ron Dennis, seventy-nine North Street. The first area here under the General Government, I'd like to question or understand what ten million dollars is. That says unclassified. That's a thirteen percent of our budget. Kind of like to know what's going on there.
Madam Moderator, do you want me to explain?
Mr. Bressad?
So unclassified winds up being all the catch-all things like health insurance, pension, all those type of things wind up in unclassified. It's, it's just the way that they...
Why wouldn't you put that in there, you know, so we'd have an idea, or we would know, I mean, ten million dollars?
So, right, so if you look at the, the actual detailed budget, all of that is broken apart, but in the warrant, it just says unclassified. But that's a fair point, and we can look at, at changing that.
So it's all operating expenses for insurances and so forth?
Correct. Yeah, it's not like unclassified, like we, we don't know. It's just, it winds up being a catch-all for things that don't neatly fit in the other categories of the municipal budget.
So last year, there was the same type of classification?
Correct.
And was all of that used, or what, what portion of that was used?
All of it. So you budget based upon what you project the expenditure to be?
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority.
Madam Moderator?
Article Fourteen.
Ms. Foley? I move that the town vote to appropriate and transfer two hundred and thirty-three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars of certified free cash, appropriate and transfer sixty thousand dollars from the sewer enterprise account, and appropriate and transfer one point, one million four hundred ninety-six thousand dollars two hundred from the Capital Stabilization Fund for total appropriation of one million seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars four hundred and eighteen for the funding of capital projects and purchases during the fiscal period from July first, two thousand twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as outlined in Appendix B of the May two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the article? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Article Fifteen.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Mead?
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of three million four hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and eighty for the operation of the Grafton Sewer Department Enterprise Fund during fiscal period July first, two thousand twenty-three to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as outlined in Appendix C of the May two thousand twenty-three Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Sixteen.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Roy?
I move that the town vote to appropriate five hundred sixty-five thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars to fund the Grafton Community Television Budget for fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand twenty-three, as recommended by the Cable Oversight Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your...
Done.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you, Mr. Yeoman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Yeoman, two-nine-seven Providence Road. I would ask for a brief snapshot of the subscriber base and a view of the picture of the losses in subscribers that are cutting cable. I know that Shrewsbury is affected by it, Westboro is being affected by it, and I'd like to have a snapshot picture, a brief presentation of some sort to better inform us relative to this phenomenon that's occurring, which is going to affect future revenues. Thank you.
Cable Oversight Committee, is there someone here who can speak to that?
I don't think there's anybody that has a presentation...
No.
...prepared. Mr. Dotoma is here from Grafton Cable.
Mr. Dotoma, could you come forward, please?
And you're right, I'm not prepared. The numbers continue to drop, as you mentioned, in every town in the vicinity, but the numbers are not dropping off a cliff. It's more of a gentle glide. Verizon is the strongest subscriber base, and Charter Spectrum is the weaker base. We're currently in negotiations with Verizon for a new contract, and they basically are separated in five- and ten-year increments. And so far, the numbers that are presented by the negotiating attorney to the negotiating team are strong, with no indication that at a minute, they'd be... with no indication that at a minute, they'd be gone. We can get numbers for you, Bill, and we can present them to you, but that's the best I can do tonight.
Are there any other questions on the article? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Seventeen.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate funds in the amount of one million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars to pay the town's a portion share of the net operating cost and capital assessment of the Blackstone Valley Regional School District.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article Seventeen? Hearing none. All those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Eighteen.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate funds in the amount of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the sewer retained earnings account to the major equipment account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Nineteen.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate one hundred thousand dollars from the sewer retained earnings account to the plant upgrade expansion account.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Twenty. Yes, sir. Article Twenty?
Madam Moderator, were you waiting for me?
I am.
Kind of thought so. I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars from the FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues for community preservation administrative expenses and re, and reserve from the twenty, FY twenty-twenty-four estimated revenues of seventy-three thousand, seven hundred dollars for each of the following reserve accounts: Historic Resources Reserve, Affordable Housing Reserve, and the Open Space Reserve, all to be held for future appropriations and further to reserve three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars to the budgeted reserve for future appropriations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Twenty-one.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Roy.
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars from the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four Community Preservation Estimated Reserve for the purpose of making the fifteenth of twenty interest and principal payments on the Pell Farm Property Bond.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Twenty-two.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton.
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of seventy-two thousand, one hundred dollars from the Community Preservation Historic Reserve for the purposes of making ninth of twenty interest and principal payments on the Grafton Townhouse Restoration Bond.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Twenty-three.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to appropriate funds in the amount of two hundred twenty-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-two dollars from the FY twenty-four Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve for the Norcross Park Inclusive Playground Project.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Before we open this for discussion, Jen Anderson from the Recreation Department will be making a brief presentation.
Hello, everybody. Jen Anderson, Recreation Director. I'm here tonight with members of the Recreation Commission seeking CPA funds to create inclusive playground at Norcross Park. An inclusive play space welcomes people of all abilities to play, learn, and grow together, a place that goes beyond minimum accessibility to create play experiences that meet a variety of needs and interests. The current playground is in need of replacement for the age-two-to-five structure damaged in a storm last spring. And the age-five-to- twelve, five-to-twelve structure is at the end of its useful life. The time is for tuitus to improve, expand, and upgrade play opportunities to streamline resources for funding design, equipment purchase, freight, and installation, and avoid duplicating efforts, extending the timeline and closure of the playground, and increasing the cost. This is the largest and most central playground in town, and the same level of opportunities cannot incur in other playgrounds due to their size or water tables. This project meets all priorities of the Community Preservation Committee Plan goals, multiple goals of the Town Open Space and Recreation Plan, the ADA Transition Plan, the State's Open Space and Recreation Plan. It is endorsed by the Accessibility Advisory Commission. It expands and improves recreation facilities for a variety of user groups, expands opportunities for active recreation, it serves an underserved population, offers amenities beyond requirements for people with disabilities, and adds ground and fully accessible components. The amenities include equipment for ages six months to twelve years, poured-in-place rubber surfacing, and I'm sorry, I'm not following along, thank you very much for the slides, shade and seating, and a variety of, in a variety of motions, ground-level play, sensory play, and material diversity for inclusive atmosphere where everyone of all abilities can interact with each other, explore, imagine, and play together to develop physically, cognitively, socially, and emotionally. The total project cost is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, three hundred and ninety-seven, six ninety-one, eighty-three cents. Other funds coming to the table in the total of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. That includes in-kind work by DPW, earmarking of the capital budget, and the insurance payout from the damaged equipment of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And that's almost forty-three percent of the cost that's being contributed to. So, the total CPA funds are being requested are two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollars and eighty-three cents. We seek your support and foot in this funding, and we thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. I'll now open it up for discussion.
Roger Trahan-Furold up in the road. Jen, you made my life easier. To reiterate that I'm Chair of the Accessibility Advisory Commission, and we did recently approve, well, not approve, but endorsed this particular project, and again, it goes a long way toward the many items that are listed in the town's two thousand and nineteen ADA Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan. And Jen has been pretty proactive. It's not only reactive in what the, that self-evaluation outlines, but she really has gone the extra mile at keeping lines of communication open to our commission in hopes of a, a more accessible Grafton, so please vote yes on this article. Thank you.
Bill Hanley-Brigham Hill wrote, I just have a quick question. What happened to the funds that we had for Super Park? Many years ago?
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Ms. Roy.
In two thousand and twenty, there was a citizen's petition to return those funds to the Municipal Capital Stabilization Account, which some of those funds are being used to play, build this playground.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Come on down.
Hi, Joanne Rosalia, Two-Two-Three McGill Drive. Jen, total great, very much in support of the article. Question on, are there funds in, included for oversight of, and max, a way to maximize the use of the park? Any, like, programs that would be incorporated in that manner? Is that a clear question? So, so, the question, the question is, how to maximize the, I'm totally supportive of it. How will it be monitored and to be maximized for full use? For all who can, because not everybody who can attend will attend, so encouraging and monitoring the use of the, of the park.
Please.
Thank you. I don't exactly initially envision anything differently than we do with any of our playgrounds for, for oversight. We do obviously have the opportunity to encourage different programming there, and so we'll be evaluating that once this is in place. It is going to take quite a bit of time to get it out. There is a twenty-to-twenty-four week lead time on equipment arrival, so that's a, a very minimal opportunity for a fall install. We're probably looking at next spring. So, we'll have plenty of time to be able to launch that as part of our spring and summer programming that comes out in February. But we do envision that because of the amenities there, I think it will be a, a very word-of-mouth atmosphere and for, you know, a destination for our, our town and, and outside of-town residents.
Mr. Yeoman.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Yeoman's, Two-Nine-Six, Providence Road. As many know, I was adamantly opposed to the Super Park, and I commend the Parks and Rec and Jen for what you've put together here for the Norcross Park. And my attitude relative to the Super Park was that if that were to go in, then the neighborhood parks would pay a price for it. And I'm really buoyed by seeing this, and I hope that this can be copied to some extent in all of the neighborhood parks. I grew up with neighborhood parks. I'm a strong believer in them. If you want to go to a, you know, Six Flags, go to Six Flags. But if you want to, you know, not everybody can travel to Grafton Center easily. So, I just, again, I commend you, and I hope that you can continue with this in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions on the article? Yep, come on down.
Hi, Julie Capazello, Thirty-four Pleasant Street. First of all, thank you to the committee for presenting this, and it's, it's great to redo it. My concern was basically just around, you know, building it. They will come. I think it's awesome, but what about parking there? Parking is a concern because being down there for baseball games, I don't think that there's enough as it stands now, and if we build something even better. Are there any funds for expanding the parking there? Or lighting, too, for evening time?
Jen?
Thank you. I think lighting would be eventually down the line, as maybe some of our other parks, like Ferry Street, need it as well, and it's a quite expensive project, right? That's part of the problem with our athletic fields and playground setup now, right? Is there's no playground dedicated besides Perry Park, right, which is, which is somewhat small, that's not competing with athletic fields. But Little League is the, you know, dominant user of that. That's nights and weekends for a brief spring and, and fall period. And so, that would be more difficult, access rate during those few hours. We'll be looking at if there is expansion opportunities there. But we have also spoken to the chief. We know there's a lot of cars that park there who live in the area, who shouldn't be parking there twenty-four-seven. And so, if that's something we have to look at, cracking down on more, that, that we will.
Any other questions? Yes, sir. Yep. Yep, can you bring him a mic? Sir, if you could raise your hand so she knows who it is. Thank you.
I am Bob Snyder, George Hill Road. The word "expansion" came up. Can you define what that means by "expansion"?
Jen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not expanding the footprint there at all, so we're able to offer, and I don't know who is in charge of the slideshow, if it's William, but if there's a picture, you can see what we're able to, to pack into that, to that space. So, I, I'm just saying, expanding at opportunities-wise. We're expanding the opportunities of play there that do not currently exist.
Excellent questions. Are there any more questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Twenty-four.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Foley.
I move that the town vote to appropriate ten thousand dollars from the fiscal year twenty-four Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve to establish a rental assistance program for Grafton Housing Authority residents and applicants.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article Twenty-five.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Mead.
I move that the town vote to amend Section Three Use and Intensity Regulations, subsection three-point-three-point-three-point-one of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw, as detailed in Article Twenty-five of the May, two thousand and twenty-three Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further vote to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with the said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Madam Moderator, Justin Wood, Chair of the Planning Board. At its meeting on May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Grafton Planning Board conducted a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Grafton Zoning Bylaw to define the language for principal structures erected on the same lot. The modification ensures adequacy of access to utility service and drainage serving. Each individual structure reinforces that access is equivalent to that required for structures on separate lots and confirms the minimum lot area width and frontage shall be the sum of the requirements for each individual structure. Lastly, the modification reinforces the minimum distance between structures shall be the height of the bill, the height of the higher building. Board members present were Chairman Justin Wood, myself, Vice Chairman Robert Hassinger, Clerk David Robbins, and Members Linda Hassinger and Prabhu Venkatarman. No public comment on the article was received. The article was recommended by the building inspector to provide clarity to those interpreting the zoning bylaw and prevent ongoing issues with its current interpretation. Based on the board's deliberations on the merits of the proposed amendment, the Planning Board voted unanimously five to zero to recommend Article Twenty-five.
Thank you, Justin. Are there, is there any discussion on the motion? Yes, sir.
Brian Holt, Sixty-eight Carroll Road, North Grafton. A couple of questions. One is, I'd like to know what the definition of principal structure is? And second question is, what happens to the existing lots with two structures or with, that would not meet requirements?
Okay, Fiona? Our town planner is going to.
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
The principal structure is the primary structure that would be on the lot. And I'm sorry, I did not hear your second question.
Second question is, what happens to, to existing lots with two structures that would not meet new requirements?
The existing structures that would not meet the requirements would be treated as the, before this, this is ongoing clarification for, for new structures.
Okay, so no changes for the existing?
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Article 26.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Roy?
I move that the town vote to amend the Grafton Zoning Bylaw by remunerating Section 12.6.2 Development Types as Section 12.6.3 Development Types, and further vote to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaws to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator, Justin Wood, Planning Board Chair. At this meeting on May 5, 2023, the Grafton Planning Board conducted a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Grafton Zoning Bylaw pertaining to updating the numbering for Section 12.6.2 Development Types to Section 12.6.3 Development Types for the Village Mixed-Use District. Board members present were myself, Chairman Justin Wood, Vice Chairman Robert Hassinger, Clerk David Robbins, and Members Linda Hassinger and Prabhu Venkatesh Trauman. No public comment on the article was received. The article was predicated upon the need for the zoning bylaw to reflect accurate lettering, numbering, and pagination. Based on the board's deliberation on the merits of the proposed amendment, the Planning Board voted unanimously 5 to 0 to recommend Article 26.
Thank you, Justin. Are there any other questions or comments on the motion? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Article 27.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Ofton?
I move that the town vote to amend Section 4.2 Off-Street Parking and Loading, Subsections 421 General and 422 Off-Street Parking Schedule of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw, as detailed in Article 27 of the May 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further vote to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator, Justin Wood, Planning Board Chair. At this meeting on May 5, 2023, the Grafton Planning Board conducted a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Grafton Zoning Bylaw to allow exception from off-street parking and loading requirements in the Grafton Common Historic District, and to modify the off-street parking schedules units of measure for various land uses, including village mixed-use parking requirements for multifamily dwellings, and update the minimum parking requirements for village mixed-use multifamily dwellings. Warehouse units will be separated and based on parking of 750 square feet of gross floor area. Industrial uses will be separated and based on 750 square feet of gross floor area. The unit of measure for transportation and utility uses will be changed to one parking space for every 750 square feet. Parking spaces per unit for multifamily dwellings in the Village Mixed-Use District will change from 1 to 1.25 for a studio or one-bedroom, from 1.5 to 2.25 for a two-bedroom, and from 2 to 2.25 for a three or more than three-bedroom. Board members present were myself, Chairman Justin Wood, Vice Chairman Robert Hassinger, Clerk David Robbins, and Members Linda Hassinger and Prabhu Venkatesh Trauman. No public comment on the article was received. The article was recommended by the Building Inspector and the town planner to better facilitate existing and new businesses located on the common that do not meet existing parking requirements, to align with current parking practices, to prevent public safety issues in the Village Mixed-Use District, and to provide clarity to those interpreting the zoning bylaw. Based on the board's deliberations on the merits of the proposed amendment, the Planning Board voted unanimously 5 to 0 to recommend Article 27.
Thank you, Justin.
Hi, Diane Gagny from 119 Old Westboro Road. Why is the historic district exempt? Just curiosity.
Sure. Fiona, can you speak to that, please?
Madam Moderator, the Grafton Common Historic District is a very challenging place currently to park. I think folks are well aware, but the, this proposal was brought to town meeting in the past and was asked to be clarified, and then we decided to bring it back just because of the parking configuration right now is, should be exempt from the standard parking requirements due to limitations of space. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Yep, I see a hand. Can we get a mic? They're packed in tight up there in the balcony.
Karen Henning, 12 Barbara Jean Street. Just out of curiosity, do we have current guidelines, or these are new guidelines?
Fiona?
Madam Moderator, was the question, are these new guidelines?
Yes.
No, well, the multifamily dwelling parking spaces required per unit will be new. They will be increased, but the other parking requirements are the same, other than the changes to the industrial and utility uses, transportation, sorry, transportation utility uses, industrial uses, and warehouse use. The, there's no parking requirements currently for, that will be changed, other than that.
Okay, so this is for our zoning, so when new developments and different things come in, it's more spelled out for, to make, for the zoning board and for new developers to understand what we're requiring?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. This does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Article 28.
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson?
I move that the town vote to amend Section 12.7 Parking of the Grafton Zoning Bylaw, excuse me, by repealing subsections 12.74 Shared Parking and 12.76 Off-Street Parking Schedule, and replacing them with the new wording provided in Article 28 of the May 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further vote to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator, Justin Wood, Planning Board Chair. At this meeting on May 5, 2023, the Grafton Planning Board conducted a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Grafton Zoning Bylaw to remove text in Section 12.7.4 and replace with text referencing Section 4.2.5.3 Shared Parking, to remove text in Section 12.7.6 and replace with text referencing Section 4.2.2 Off-Street Parking Schedule, and include text to reference the option of a special permit for applicants that do not conform to Section 4.2.2 Off-Street Parking Schedule requirements for the Village Mixed-Use District, but can provide adequate off-street parking, including sufficient on-street parking, shared parking, or visitor parking. Board members present were Chairman Justin Wood, myself, Vice Chairman Robert Hassinger, Clerk David Robbins, and Members Linda Hassinger and Prabhu Venkatesh Trauman. No public comment on the article was received. The article will provide clarity to those interpreting the zoning bylaw and prevent issues of repeated language in various sections of the zoning bylaw, and allow the board discretion in their review of proposals in the Village Mixed-Use District that do not conform to the modified minimum parking requirements. Based on the board's deliberations on the merits of the proposed amendment, the Planning Board voted unanimously 5 to 0 to recommend Article 28.
Thank you, Justin. Are there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands high. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Article 29.
Madam Moderator?
Ms. Foley?
I move that the town vote to amend the Grafton Zoning Bylaw by amending Appendix A 3.2.3.1 Use Regulation Schedule, Accessory Uses, to add an item number 15, adding a new section, Section 5.12, accessory uses in agricultural and residential, I'm sorry, yep, residential districts for seasonal, outdoor, eating, and drinking establishments, including banquet facilities, alcohol sales, and live entertainment, and adding a new condition, Condition K in Section 1.5.5, conditions for granting special permits, all as outlined in Article 29 of the May 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, and further vote to authorize non-substantive changes to the lettering, numbering, and pagination of the zoning bylaw to be consistent with said bylaw.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator, Justin Wood, Planning Board Chair. At this meeting on May 5, 2023, the Grafton Planning Board conducted a public hearing to consider the proposed amendments to the Grafton Zoning Bylaw to allow a new accessory use, number 15, via special permit in all districts for seasonal outdoor eating and drinking establishments, including banquet facilities, alcohol sales, and live entertainment, that relate to the operation of a principal agricultural use in an amount of no more than 10% of the total agricultural acreage, limited to no more than 10 decibels above ambient noise levels at the property line, for an agricultural farm principal use for properties over 20 acres. The board also considered adding a new Section 5.12, accessory uses in agricultural and residential districts for seasonal outdoor eating and drinking establishments, including banquet facilities, alcohol sales, and live entertainment, and adding a new condition for granting special permits, K, uses and their accessory uses will not have detrimental effects which outweigh their benefits to the neighborhood, town, or zoning district in which it is located, to align with changes to Appendix A 3.2.3.1. Board members present were Chairman Justin Wood, Vice Chairman Robert Hassinger, Clerk David Robbins, and Members Linda Hassinger and Prabhu Venkatesh Trauman. Two emails of public comment were received. A member of the public made inquiries during the public hearing. The article was brought before the board as a citizen's petition, and was revised and ultimately sponsored by the board to bring the petition into legal compliance, allow the board discretion in other review, sorry, their review of proposals seeking to pursue such activities on agricultural property, and to prevent disturbance and minimize detrimental effects of such activities on their surroundings. Based on the board's deliberations on the merits of the proposed amendment, the Planning Board voted unanimously 5 to 0 to recommend Article 29.
Thank you, Justin. Any discussion on the motion?
David Libby, 44 George Hill Road. I'm curious as to how many properties there might be in the town of Grafton which would meet the basic requirements of this article, such as a minimum of 20 acres and so forth.
Fiona? Could you, thank you.
There are about 17 parcels over 20 acres according to current assessor's data. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's 17 of 20-plus acres divided among 14 owners. Yes.
Good evening. Kristy Kilbozinski of 3 Lottie Drive. I have a question regarding this article. Is there a time limit in regards to the entertainment and drinking and banquet facilities, such as, would this, could this go on all evening, or is there any kind of information about that?
Justin?
Yes, so this article as it stands does not put a limit on that, though it is under special permit only, so that means that it will come before the planning board when anyone like to pursue a use in this article. And the planning board does have discretion to insert conditions that include the hours of operation and, you know, things along that nature, that, and that planning board process will be a complete public hearing, so the public will be invited and notified to make comments and attend stuff for our record.
So each time this would take place, a permit would be granted for each individual event, such as if at Holden Farms, if the shanty were to take place every Saturday, there would need to be a permit taken out each time?
For the Holden Farms, if that was the particular mention you, location you mentioned, is that they would come before us with a proposal for their special permit, saying they are allowed to use this use on the property. And the planning board can make a determination based on that use, that would be, you know, based on how long the planning board wants to, typically indefinitely, but would have conditions that would ensure compliance. The zoning enforcement officer would help ensure compliance for any conditions the planning board grants.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other discussion on the article, the motion? Yes, I have a hand. Microphone is coming to you.
Hi, Betsy Smith, 125 Old Westboro Road. It's really just a comment. It's not a question, but I want to identify, there are a number of people who've lived in the area for a very long time. My husband and I have lived there for over 38 years. This shanty and the additional services with the food and playground that the Holdens have provided has been nothing but a gem to Grafton. My husband just told me I had to stop, that that was sufficient. But we really, in regards to the music and the things that they have kind of said are negative impacts, this isn't any different than what happens in the rest of the town or the area. The amount of noise isn't any different than what happens when there is music on the common. The people in the area are not disrupted. If it is, it's the same amount of volume. I can tell you, because I grew up on North Street, so I know, and that things like drunk drivers and squealing cars are things that have happened for the last 38 years in the area. And nothing has changed in regard, when the shanty is open, in my, in our opinion. So thank you.
Okay. I see another hand up in the next row, if you can. Look at that neighbors helping each other with the microphone.
Dave Tarian, 14 Maroni Road. Just a clarification to Mr. Libby's question. They said there were 20, 20 areas that were 20 acres or more. I guess my question is, is are they currently in agricultural use? Because the 20 acres alone doesn't seem to meet the guidelines.
The number of agricultural parcels over 20 acres are 17. Does that clarify it for you?
My understanding was is that it had to be currently in agricultural use?
Fiona?
I'm in an, I'm in an R80 zone, but I'm not a, I'm not in agricultural use. So my question is, are they, do they currently have to be working as a farm to qualify?
Justin?
Yes, so to apply for special permit under this new article, the parcel has to be currently in agricultural use. This is an accessory use option.
I see a hand in the back.
So how many actual farms would qualify under this new zoning? I believe they had said there were 17 properties that were over 20 acres, but how many of them are agricultural?
Fiona?
Madam Moderator, yes, there are, according to assessor's data, there's 17 agricultural parcels in Chapter 61 land, so those would be the primary agricultural use, and this would, the accessory use would apply if they were interested in going for the planning board.
Yes.
My name's Bill Simzak, 68 George Hill Road. I just want to point out something here. This is, I've been to the Holden Farm, whatever you call it. It's a great thing to go to. It's good entertainment in the summertime and in the fall. So I'm... It's good entertainment in the summertime and in the fall, so I'm definitely for that. But this article starts off, if you read on the, it says 5.12, accessory uses in agricultural and residential districts. You've been focused on the agricultural, so why do you have residential in the title? That's number one. And to me, it seems that this is somewhat discriminatory to potentially other venues that could also open up to outdoor activities, such as what we see at Holden Farms. Second thing that I'd like to point out is that there's a lot of requirements on the acreage, yada, yada, and that sort of thing, but there's also what happens with public space use as Holden Farms with stuff like restroom facilities and all that that have to go along with it, or can they just satisfy that need with porta-potties, et cetera. But the point really to make here is that you're focused only on agricultural and maybe excluding other venues from being able to go to some kind of operation like Holden Farms. So it seems to be a bit, I don't want to say discriminatory, but it's definitely focused on only agricultural. Thank you.
Madam Moderator. So agricultural uses are protected in the citizen's petition as it was presented to the Planning Board before they sponsored it, was focused on agricultural. And this has been kind of crafted as an effort between the Planning Board and the public to get to this language that we're at today and involved a lot of outreach and kind of coordination to set these parameters. So that is ultimately how we landed on what we have here.
Mr. Hassenger.
Oh, I beg your pardon, go ahead, sir.
Go ahead.
Bob Hassinger, George Hill Road. This came up because of the Holden Farm concern. Took a lot of thinking to find a way to, in some, in some way, help. And certainly, my position, I think the Board's idea, was to start this with a conservative approach, limited. And in the future, if there are needs for, or desires for a wider applicability of this sort of thing, we can always come to our town meeting and add it to what we have here.
Mike Carlstrom, 2 Ronick Street. I just have a general question about what constitutes seasonal and how is that a flexible designation? Say a venue wants to do a winter carnival or something like that, you know, how is that addressed? And who can, who controls that?
Fiona?
The seasonal designation follows the typical seasonal, like, parameters that Holden Farms currently operating in, but it would be dictated typically the summer and fall months, as well as follow the, the standard protocols that the town factors in for when they're considering seasonal uses. So this would not differ from anything different than what in current operations.
Do we have any other questions? Mr. Trahan?
Roger Trahan, 4 Old Upton Road. I think this is an easy yes, but I'm just going to ask if people stick around. I have the sense that with all the applause, that everyone's going to bolt out of here. We have 35 articles, and I'm just hoping that enough of us stick around and maybe you, Madam Moderator, and members of the Select Board and Finance Committee will help me out here. So I'm just asking, I think maybe we'll be, have another half hour, 45 minutes, so thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion to move the question.
Second.
Mr. Dofne, you already have the microphone. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Craig Dofne, 5 Brew Street. We kind of, sitting here, we kind of know this article revolves currently around Holden Farm because they are, been trying to have a entertainment and music venue for the last couple of years, and anybody's been following the town process, it's been difficult to say the least for them, and I think for the town too, because there was no mechanism or process or pathway to do this. And this is exactly what this article does. There used to be dozens of farms in town, apple orchards, pig farms, dairy farms, and most of those are gone. And we're very fortunate to have Holden Farm, and we have the Holden family, and the next generation is taking over that farm, working hard, and welcoming our community onto their farm and into their yard for a night of entertainment, gathering with friends and family, having a little petting zoo and some swings for the kids to play on, watching the sunset. And it's a really beautiful venue that so many of us in this room have enjoyed over the last couple of years. So I am urging everybody to support this. Once this farming is gone, it's gone. It's not coming back. And we have a family that's trying to expand the use of the farm and create a wonderful venue for our community. It's important. So I would urge everybody to vote in favor of Article 29. Thank you.
I move the question.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor to move the question. A vote in favor means we proceed to vote on this article. A vote against means we will continue discussion. All those in favor. All those opposed. I declare the motion carried. Wait, no, 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 no. The, the motion to move the question. Article 29, this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 29. All those opposed. I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Okay, this next one's going to be easy. Article 30.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Mead?
I move the town vote to pass over Article 30.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to pass over Article 30. All those in favor, this requires a majority vote. All those opposed. I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article 31.
Madam Moderator.
Ms. Roy?
I moved that the town vote to authorize the Select Board to petition the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to enact special legislation to change the position of the town clerk in the town of Grafton from elected to appointed, as is outlined in Article 31 of the May 2023 Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article 31?
George Liamhool, 68 Carroll Road. So, for what reason are we, the proud people of Grafton, surrendering our right to choose our own officials? Have those chosen by the people been so derelict in their duties that such a drastic action needs be taken? The proposal drafted by those who benefit from it claims greater accountability. This disingenuous claim implies the inability of the voters to recognize incompetence and an inability of the police to act on malicious corruption. Instead, an already appointed official asks us to trust on their judgment alone. Does anyone in this room trust that no friend or family will ever be appointed, who we will now be powerless to replace? We once fought for the right to choose our own leaders. Let us not now give that right away.
Is there any other discussion on the article? I have a hand in the back.
Craig Dofne, 5 Brew Street. This article, many of you know, has come before, town meeting before. I'm glad it's back. Every town department head is, applies for a position, interviews for that position, and gets appointed by the Board of Selectmen for that position. So that person is vetted, meets the qualifications, and then gets hired. I see no reason that the town clerk's position should be any different than that. We need a process that assures that we're getting qualified people for that job. And somebody's putting their name on a ballot does not make them qualified to be a department head. Thank you.
Any other discussion on article? Hearing none, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required majority. Article 32.
Madam Moderator.
Mr. Ofton?
I move that the town appropriates $7 million to pay costs of the George Hill Road resurfacing and drainage improvement project, so-called, which project, which project includes the full reconstruction of the road, its substrate and all associated stormwater infrastructure, together with full design, engineering permitting, and construction oversight, and all other costs incidental and related thereto. And that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, is authorized to borrow said amount, under and pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, subsection 7.1, or any other enabling authority to issue bonds or notes at the town therefore. No amounts shall be borrowed or expended pursuant to this vote unless the town shall have voted in accordance with general law, Chapter 57, Section 21. To exclude the amounts required to repay any borrowing approved by this vote from the limitations on the town's property tax levy set forth in general law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c).
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. This, oh, oh, I didn't see you moving, sorry.
Melissa Drefy, 104 North Street. I completely agree that the road is very dangerous, especially to bicyclists. I broke my leg two years ago, but not on the road, so I haven't been out, you know, bicycling lately. But I did want to point out, there's been some engineering projects in town that went beyond the initial scope, in particular, in front of my parents' home on Miriam Road at Adams Road. The original charter of this project was to improve the drainage on Adams Road, and what happened was the engineer decided to basically redesign the entire intersection, and more trees were knocked down, and it really is not any better. In fact, it's worse coming out of my parents' house to see the, the cars. So my point is, I'd like to understand a little bit more about the allocation of the money, how many trees are coming down, as well as are they widening the road? I mean, I completely agree, it's a disaster with the water, but I, how much of the scope is going beyond the original to try to restore the road? Basically, is it going to be still the same width? How many trees are coming down? Please, I mean, does somebody have a presentation? It's quite a lot of money.
So, Madam Moderator, we, we held a public outreach meeting where we went in-depth and we gave anyone that, that wanted to see the, it's called a roll plan, so it's, it's basically every inch of the plan up to 10% of design. And we, we can certainly, you know, find that on our, our website and throw it up. One of the things that I can tell you, maybe in a, in a more succinct way, is, so currently the road, if, if you have been down the road, which I think most of us have, either side is what's called country drainage, which is just a fancy name for a ditch. And so those ditches would go away, the, the road would be widened at 22 feet with what's called a Cape Cod berm on either side, which is just a mound of asphalt, just so you're clear. They fancy it up a lot. And so the, the tree question, we, we do have a plan that shows which trees would need to come down, but that will require its own separate public hearing to determine with, with the necessary authorities which ones go and which ones stay. So the reasons that we, that we took this particular approach is that while we want to be able to fix the drainage and the asphalt on George Hill Road, we don't want to lose the rural character of that road. It's a very scenic road. It's, it's a beautiful area of town, and we don't want to change that character fundamentally. We just want to be able to move the water off of the road in a controlled manner. We also, as far as scope, we did not spec anywhere that would have a new outfall. We are using the existing outfalls. And we did that very specifically because we have applied for what's called a municipal vulnerability grant, and we specifically targeted the existing outfalls to make our chances of getting that grant much better.
I see another question coming down to the microphone.
Peter Adams on 100 Brigham Hill Road. And I, I agree, George Hill needs a lot. And Brigham Hill was fixed years ago, and I love it, and I love the town for fixing it. Is this an override? Where's the money coming from?
Yeah, so if you, if you look at the, the language, there's also a, a fact sheet we had at the beginning, but it's 50/50. So 50% of it comes out of the existing road stabilization account, and 50% of it is a debt exclusion.
So there's a...
So the, the debt exclusion would be on the ballot coming up at your, your next annual meeting, or, sorry, this is the annual meeting. The, at the next annual election, which averages, with an average single-family home would be $48.26 per year for the next 15 years to pay the balance of the project.
For the next how many years?
15.
15.
One, five, yeah. The, the other thing I, I would note is that, that's without us getting any other assistance or grants. We've just submitted one grant last Friday, and we have another grant that's in completion within the next two weeks.
And what are we giving up every year on the...
It, it equates to $315,000 out of the municipal road stabilization.
But what are we giving up? Are we giving up chip ceiling, crack ceiling, paving some roads? What are we giving up?
Yes, yeah, basically, you would, you would be looking at a, at a reduction in the amount of work that we're able to do every year out of road stabilization.
And how much, how much of this has been engineered right now?
We're at 10%.
10%. Who came up with the 7 million?
The 10% plan does that. So that's what you do. You, you refunded the first 10% plan, they give us the estimate of, of what they think it would cost, then you fund with this, these monies, the rest of the plan, and the construction oversight and all of the rest of it.
Do they guarantee it won't go over 7 million?
No, no. No, sir, sir, this is the government.
This isn't my 7 million. This is yours too.
Yeah, no.
What, what worries me is you get halfway through it and you go, oh my God, we're out of money.
Yeah, I, I...
You can't stop then, then it, then the road owns us. And I know the road needs to get fixed, and I'm not against it. I just, I'm a little confused.
So, so this is, this is how we do all of these road plans, right? So we, we hire the engi- So we hire the engineer to give us, and again, it's called a 10% plan, which is basically the role plan and the entire scope of the project, and then they give us the good faith estimate. So what they tell us is, the project will be between 5 million and 7 million dollars. And then we come to you and say, "We'd like you to authorize 7 million dollars." Now, if we come in under, great, we come in at 5.8, 6.2, whatever it is. But if we hit more ledge than we're anticipating, if we have these other contingencies, we've already built in that 30% contingency into the 7 million dollars.
I hate to bring this up, but when we built the DPW, nobody knew there was ledge there.
Yeah.
And how long is George Hill?
Two miles.
Two miles. I'm just wondering, should there be more studies? And I'm not trying to kill something in a study committee, but should we come back in the fall when we have more engineering and knowledge on this? I don't want to put it off forever, I just...
No, I would respectfully disagree. I think that we've done our initial due diligence, and then we'll continue on. So I think that one of the greatest cost-saving measures that we have in this project is using the existing flow of water and its existing outfalls, because those culverts and those transitions have already been formed. So, in short.
Madam Moderator?
Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ofton.
I can give you one guarantee, it's not going to be cheaper next year. So, the cost is going to be what it is. What we've tried to do is keep the character of the road substantially similar to what it is. We've tried to position ourselves for as much grant money as possible, which could be, I think, up to 2 million dollars, which would reduce the cost of, you know, to the homeowners. Additional study is not going to make it less expensive over time. So the cost is going to be what the cost is, and of course, we're going to, you know, try to spend every tax dollar wisely, but it's just not going to get less expensive over time. Everybody else in town has benefited from this road stabilization program that we've had with the override, and it's time for that, the people on that road, to also benefit from it, as well as this debt exclusion.
And I agree with you.
Thank you. Do we, did I hear move the question? There's a, nope, there's someone, sorry, someone was running down, I'm sorry.
Hi. Leanne Gagnon, 17 Maplewood Drive. I just have a question, is George Hill considered a scenic road?
Yes.
Okay. And does that impact the cost of fixing it? Like, are there trees that can't be touched, or rock walls?
So, to a certain extent, I guess the answer's yes and no. And again, we're the government, so it gets really complicated really fast. We decided that the layout of that road is between the stone walls, so the idea is that if we have to touch any of the stone walls, we need to replace them in kind, so you don't lose that character. But there's really very few places in which, on the plan, that needs to occur. And I think we met all of the folks that had wallwork at the public outreach meeting, and showed them what that would look like. And then, lastly, the tree component is a little bit, it's just difficult to quantify, because if you've been down the road recently, some of these scenic trees are half-dead. They took a lot of abuse during the Caterpillar, I'm drawing a blank on what those are called, gypsy moths, thank you. So, you know, I think that, you know, all the residents of George Hill Road would be notified of the public hearing in which you can discuss trees, and we will certainly, you know, bend the road in those areas to try to keep as many as possible, especially the large heritage trees.
If it's declassified as scenic, would it lower the cost?
If, I'm sorry, what did you say?
If you took away the scenic road, would it lower the cost, the 7 million dollars?
Oh, if it was, sorry, I thought you said declassified, I'm like, I don't know what that means.
I did, declassified as a scenic road.
Gotcha. No, if it was declassified as a scenic road, no, I would doubt it. The way that we've designed it so far stays within that scope of the walls on either side and the taking. So we're really not looking at any major costs associated with the scenic road component.
I can speak a little bit more to scenic roads here.
The member of the planning board can speak to the scenic road question.
Yes, to the question about scenic roads, David Robbins, 92 George Hill Road, member of the planning board. I happen to be pretty familiar with the scenic roads by law, because the planning board administers that. First of all, I don't believe we actually have a mechanism spelled out for declassifying it as a scenic road, not that any of us would want to do that, but as a practical matter, the planning board will review the plans for the road from beginning to end, from one end of the road to the other. And the scenic road bylaw requires the planning board to look specifically at the impacts of the project on the trees and the stone walls. And the goal of the scenic roads bylaw is to minimize destruction or alteration of stone walls, and minimize the loss of trees. We did a similar review a few years ago on Adams Road, and what ends up with, and I think Evan described, the efforts that they've made at this, up to this point in the design to minimize the, in fact, I think the design shows no net loss whatsoever of stone walls, and a minimal loss of trees. You know, the scenic roads law accepts that sometimes trees can't be preserved, but they seek to minimize it, and it really does not going to have any noticeable impact on the cost of the project. But it is, as Evan alluded to, the planning board will be reviewing the impacts of this project on all trees and stone walls, with an eye towards making sure that the impact is minimized, that we preserve the scenic character of the road.
Your question? Yes.
Hi, my name is Amy Thornton, I live at 15 Maplewood Drive, and I grew up in Grafton, I've lived here my whole life, I can certainly appreciate a scenic road. But for those of us who don't live on a scenic road, I would just, I guess this is more of a comment to the Select Board, to the planning board, and to everybody else in town, is that the character of our road matters as well, and so there's a lot of care and a lot of thought going in to save the roads in town that are beautiful, which I'm completely in agreement with, but I just feel like that's not given to the rest of the town. So I just kind of want to, I get it, that's a gorgeous road for the mile point two, for those people that live on it, but the rest of us deserve the same kind of thought when projects come to town, to maintain the character of our neighborhoods as well.
Bob Snyder, again, George Hill Road. There was a couple of things on that first meeting for the George Hill people. One thing that came up was liability. What if a school bus goes into one of those ditches? I wonder how that's going to be accounted for. Correct. When the project does, when the project gets going, what's going to happen up until then, when the project starts? I'm just saying, what if an accident happens? And the liability, like, biggest thing I can think is school buses. I lived up on that hill all my life, pretty much, so my question is, how does that town handle that?
That's, okay. So, I'm not a, an attorney, although the town council accuses me of trying to be. I would say, I would say this, the town's blanket liability would cover any of the financial responsibility, and the town is also protected by the Mass Claims Act, Tort Claims Act, of whatever year, I didn't get that from law school. So I don't think our exposure is very, very big, to be honest with you. I think that, you know, you all, or any of you that travel the road, probably have more personal liability than the town of Grafton does, in that if you drive into one of those ditches and damage your personal vehicle, that's going to be on you and not on the town of Grafton.
Okay, one more question, is it possible to get some speed limit signs up there?
Sure. Mr. Canoyer, can we do that? Sure. Mr. Canoyer says yes.
Thanks, Paul.
Oh, Kevin's got his no paddle up, I don't know, we'll work on it, Mr. Snyder.
And I had a motion to move the question twice, and... And it's been seconded.
I'll move the question, I'll move the question.
I'm moving the question. All those in favor of moving the question and ending debate. All those opposed? The motion to move the question has been approved by the majority. We will now vote on Article 32. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? I declare the motion carried by the required two-thirds vote. Before we get to the last few articles, I just want to remind everyone to return your paddles before you leave, and I want to thank the Select Board, the Finance Committee, the high school for hosting, GCTV for broadcasting, our town council, Ginny Kramer, our town clerk's office, the town administrator's office, Evan, William, Cindy, and Amber, and... Article 33 has been withdrawn, that's, Article 33, sorry.
Madam Moderator?
Andy Jefferson.
I move that the town vote to pass over Article 33. Second.
Motion made and seconded to pass over Article 33. This requires a majority vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? I declare the motion carried. Article 34. Will the citizen who submitted Article 34, please come forward?
Chantel Kimball, 5 Bigelow Way. I move the town vote to adopt a resolution in support of changing the flag and seal of Massachusetts as written in the warrant.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Before I open this for discussion, Chantel will be making a brief statement.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in favor of Article 34. Quick thank you to the other members of Grafton Rise, who have been pivotal in getting this ready and to be in front of all of you, and thank you to all of you who came out to participate tonight. The full language of the resolution, which you have in your printed copy of the warrant, briefly outlines the history of colonization and genocide here in Massachusetts, spells out specifically how this history is clearly and intentionally represented in our state seal, and subsequently on our state flag, and calls on our state leadership to move forward with the creation of a new state flag and seal. On the screen, you can see a visual breakdown of the current imagery in our state seal and flag, as it is detailed in the text of the resolution. Indigenous leaders have been calling for this change for over 50 years. The language of the resolution before you was developed with the input of current tribal members. Specifically, a member of the Nipmuck tribe assisted with the inclusion of language, helping to make the resolution specific to Grafton. For nearly 40 years, there have been efforts in the state legislature that have stalled out repeatedly without moving forward. Finally, in 2021, the legislature overwhelmingly approved a bill to establish a special commission, including legislators, historians, and representatives from the Nipmuck, Massachusetts, and Wampanoag nations. The commission is charged with recommending changes to the state seal and flag. There have been additional delays along the way. First, in appointing the 19 members to the committee, then in funding the committee, and then the committee's charge was allowed to expire before they finished the work. At the end of March, the special commission received the extension they needed, giving them a new deadline of November 15, 2023, to make final design recommendations to the legislature. With the new funding and the new deadline, the special commission is in the early stages of reconvening, and their planned next steps are to do some community outreach, and hire a designer to execute the actual creation of a new flag and seal. All of these meetings are actually public meetings, they're posted online, you can go back and look at their minutes, and kind of look at all of the things that they've been discussing, and preparing to propose. From a purely practical standpoint, a yes vote on Article 34 would mean that we send copies of the resolution printed in the warrant to Representative David Beradian and Senator Michael Moore. A yes vote doesn't guarantee further action, nor does a no vote halt the current progress. That said, given the fits and starts that this initiative has already experienced, the resolution clearly lets our state legislators know that the town of Grafton supports the change, that we hear, and that we believe the native voices calling for the change, and that we want the forward momentum to continue. Given that the land area now known as Grafton shares a long history with the Nipmuck tribe, it feels important to honor them by adding our voices to theirs, and to the many others in support of this change. If we all really take a few minutes to think about what Massachusetts means to us, what we love about our state, what we want others to think about when they see our flag, I doubt that any of us would choose genocide and colonization as our proudest accomplishments. It is time for new imagery, created with direct input from the native people that we claim to want to honor, that truly celebrates all of our people, and reflects our current values. I thank you for your attention, and I hope you'll join me in voting yes on Article 34.
Thank you for replacing my battery. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Madam Moderator?
Mr. Jefferson.
I expect there are people out there currently thinking that a vote for this article is changing history. But if we've learned one thing, that history is by definition already written. This flag will always be a part of Massachusetts history. As I've learned through presentations from Grafton Rise and Massachusetts historian and activist David Detmold, this flag is rooted in institutional racism, and is a symbol of genocide. As we've learned, it has deep roots going back to the Massachusetts Bay Colony flag, depicting what the English thought indigenous people may look like, having never actually seen them. From roughly 1775 to 1780, the state flag chose to depict Paul Revere instead, proving that we can move away from this design. We have learned some of the vile and racist statements that led to this flag's creation through historical notes and journals from both the illustrator Edmund Garrett and Secretary of State William Olwen, who commissioned it. This flag was not meant as a tribute to the indigenous people who lived here, but as a message. Right here in Grafton, we have indigenous people earning degrees that will prominently feature the seal, which is a direct affront to their heritage. Indigenous people and activists have asked that this flag be updated for over 50 years, roughly the entirety of my lifetime. It's finally time that we take this request seriously and vote to support Article 34. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on the article?
Stacy Bennett, 14 Rose Lane. So Chantel, if you can give us a little bit more information on the process as to how, what the design is going to be, who makes that decision? You did say there were public meetings, where they held, you know, how, there's a lot of people in Massachusetts, so when people come together to decide what's going to be on the next flag, if it passes, what, you know, what is, can you explain to the people here what that process is, and how the final design decision is going to be made?
I can answer part of that question, and I can answer the part of that question that's already been decided. So, the last... that's already been decided. So the last time that the commission was able to meet was actually in December of 2022, because that's when their commission expired. So their charge expired in December of 2022. They just got the approval to reconvene at the end of March of 2023. So they haven't, they haven't been able to get moving again just yet. During their December of 2022 meeting, their, I'm not sure what the best way logistically would be to get it out, but at their last meeting, the members, the 19 members of the commission had sort of started talking about some general ideas of things that they thought were more unifying symbols. Some of the ones that I remember off the top of my head are the Mayflower, which is actually not the boat, the state flower. The chickadee, I believe, was another one of the options to feature prominently. So there was a wide variety of imagery that they, as a commission, were discussing amongst themselves. And then their next steps were sort of, I mean, again, with the money, to determine what the best mechanism was, whether to survey the public. The meetings are all available. If you Google, you know, "State Commission on Changing the Mass State Flag and Seal," you will come to that section of the state website, where all of their meeting minutes, I think you have to request the meeting minutes, there's an email address, but there are a variety of, like, all of their public meeting notices are there. And then also, if you go to changethe flag.com, that's where they have links to the previous videos. Up until this point, they've all been open to the public via Zoom. So it's a process that we would all be able to follow as they do sort of get into that process to land on the final design.
So is all that information available, since we as Graftoners may, if we vote yes tonight, will be voting in the affirmative, would we then have all that information on our Grafton website, since we would supposedly, or, if you're asking Grafton residents to say yes to this, I would think they would want more information, and where can they go to be part of the process? So that's one comment. The other comment is, just to clarify, you're saying that the commission would ultimately make the decision as to what the new design will be?
So, no, actually, well, yes and no. So the commission would commandeer a design. They would, you know, get the creative input, what have you, and then they would put it in front of the legislature, who would ultimately vote to approve it.
Okay. So right now, all we're doing, it seems to me like this resolution is really about just saying, hey, there was genocide here, and we don't like that. Because without you giving us more information about, you're asking people to change what our state represents or what we've lived with for a really long time, and you're coming forth with historical data, but where's the other half of it? So we have to go on faith that who's ever going to make up the new design, and then we leave it to our legislature to vote on it.
I mean, yes and no, right? We elect our legislator, our legislature, right? Like, we elect those people, and we have a voice to that extent, and there is a means of following the process. So I think mostly, the statement that we're making is the current design, even though we're used to it, even though we've lived with it for a long time, is offensive. And, you know, the people that we're claiming to honor by having a native person at the center are telling us that it's offensive and that it's harmful to them.
Have you heard a lot of that here in Grafton? Other than the...
Yes, actually, yes.
Other than the Rise group, have you heard from anybody else that thinks it's...
Yes, Miss Platt, you cannot engage with her. You need to be engaging with me.
So I just, where can we go to get information on the change of flag?
Madam Moderator? Madam Moderator?
We have a motion to move the question.
Real quick, anybody that is looking for information, Grafton Rise did hold an outreach at the public library, which is available on the Grafton Cable Television YouTube page.
There is a motion to move the question on the floor. A vote in favor will end debate on this article. A vote against will continue the debate. All those in favor of moving the question. All those opposed to moving the question. I declare the motion carried. Article 33. All those in favor. Wrong page. Article 34. All those in favor of Article 34. All those opposed. I declare the motion carried by required majority. Article 35, as submitted, was deemed illegal, and I'm ruling it out of order. I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor. Thank you all for coming. That was 2 hours and 15 minutes on the news, right me and called it. See you later.